Vice President Gonzalez Marins.
Okay, well, let's get started. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see some of our regular faces and some really new faces here. So we'll call the meeting to order. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular virtual board meeting. Tonight's meeting is not a formal business meeting, but rather a new type of meeting we will conduct twice a year, strictly dedicated to celebrating the outstanding work being implemented at our NVUSD schools. You can join via Zoom. The open session part of the meeting agenda begins now at 6:00 PM. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Elba Gonzalez Marins, y somos el Consejo Escolar del Distrito Escolar Unificado del Valle de Napa, NVUSD por sus siglas en inglés. La reunión de esta noche no es una reunión de negocios formal, sino más bien un nuevo tipo de reunión que realizaremos dos veces al año, estrictamente dedicada a celebrar el trabajo sobresaliente que es que se está implementando en nuestras escuelas de NVUSD. Puedes unirte a través de Zoom. La parte de esta sesión abierta de la agenda de la reunión comienza ahora a las 6:00 PM. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. To access interpretation from a computer, click on the interpretation icon on the bottom of your screen from within the Zoom application. On a mobile device, click on the more button on the bottom of your screen and choose Language Interpretation from within the Zoom application. This is a separate channel that will allow you to hear English-to-Spanish translation concurrently. Please note, interpretation services are not available when you join our meeting by calling in. Our interpreters for tonight's meeting are Marcy Valdivieso and Claudia Lindgren. Marcy, please translate these directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families can hear the instructions.
Buenas noches, soy Marcy Valdivieso, una de las intérpretes. Por favor, utilice el globo o el mapa mundi en la parte inferior de su pantalla para seleccionar los servicios de interpretación al español para escuchar la interpretación simultánea mientras la reunión está sucediendo.
Thank you, Marcin. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, our executive assistant?
Yes, Trustee Martin is absent today. Trustee Gonzalez Marins?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz? Trustee Jankowicz?
She's having microphone issues, but we see she's here.
I can see her nodding.
Okay, Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Hurtado?
Present.
Trustee Shank? Trustee Shank?
I see him, Vera. It looks like you might have a mic problem.
Present.
Oh.
Thank you. Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Student Board Member Magaña?
I don't think I see her.
Okay, we'll say absent. Thank you. Quorum present.
Thank you, Vera. Thank you for joining us tonight for our first celebrating our school session in our virtual Napa Valley Unified School District Boardroom, held exclusively online. This meeting tonight is in accordance with the open meeting rules in the state of California for the governor's order. We're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is item 1.1, our flag salute. I'm going to ask Trustee Gracia to please guide us in our flag salute.
Certainly, happy to. Everyone can please rise. And then if you can join me and sing the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. We have an announcement, item 1.2. This meeting is recorded for live streaming and archiving on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced, located on the district webpage at NVUSD.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. All right, next item is item 1.3, approval of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hurtado. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody abstain or oppose? Okay, so moved. We have our agenda. Busy one for that and an exciting one as well. Okay, so I have the pleasure to introduce our first-ever celebrating our schools' board meetings. And these are a new tradition and practice in the Napa Valley Unified School District, in alignment with NVUSD's strategic plans, Goal 3, Communication, Community Engagement, and Advocacy. And Goal 6, Strategic Impactful Governance. Every October and April, we will provide a subset of our schools an opportunity to share and celebrate with the board and public their improvements, their progress, and their accomplishments at the site level as they create excellent educational opportunities for NVUSD students and implement the district's comprehensive strategic plan. Fellow trustees, tonight I ask that we move through the school presentations with brief comments and/or expressions of gratitude or recognition in between, and that we save lengthier comments for the full board for the segment of the Agenda Item 3. Comments from board members? We do not, comments from board members. We do not want to keep our schools' teams here too late, given it is the first week of hybrid in-person instruction in our district. Tonight is our inaugural celebrating schools meeting, where we welcome all of our schools from American Canyon and Valley Oak High School. Please join me, the superintendent and the NVUSD school board, in celebrating the amazing work happening at our schools. We have been called to order and conducted our attendance roll call. We will go forward with our agenda. I would like to invite Principal Stephanie Vazquez as her team to kick us off with a presentation from Canyon Oaks Elementary. Ms. Vazquez?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Masetti and distinguished Napa Valley Unified School District Board members. I'm Stephanie Vazquez, proud principal of Canyon Oaks Elementary School. Our school is located within the foothills of American Canyon, and we are home of the mighty Oaks. In representing, sorry, in representing our school team, we are honored to be here tonight, presenting to this board the first-ever celebrating our schools' presentation. I will now share my screen to view our presentation in celebrating our work at Canyon Oaks. All right. It's exciting to be a part of this celebration tonight, as it's the same week that we're welcoming back students on campuses for in-person teaching and learning across Napa Valley Unified School District for our Phase 2 reopening. At Canyon Oaks, we proudly serve a community of 675 learners. We began our phase shift back to in-person instruction four weeks ago, first serving and welcoming back our functional skills students. This week, we welcome back to our campus a total of 200 of our mighty Oaks for our in-person learning option in both our AM and PM cohorts. Seventy percent of our learners have continued with a robust distance learning option during Phase 2 of our reopen. Within our learning community, we have eight, sorry, 19.8% English language learners and 38.6% socio-economically disadvantaged students. We celebrate the diversity of our community with 16 languages spoken and represented within our school families. As we serve to live out our mission of a Napa Valley Unified School District to transform lives by instilling and inspiring lifelong learners in every student, we have worked diligently to transform our instructional delivery model, utilizing 21st century teaching and learning skills and instructional practices. We have rapidly adapted, demonstrating 22nd century skills, and have worked to create robust learning opportunities that meet the needs of our current societal conditions in response and with respect to community health and safety as a priority. All of our students are equipped with technology they need, as we're one-to-one with devices. Each student utilizing either iPad or Chromebook for learning. Teachers have laptops with access to onsite distance learning toolkits with iPads. Our classrooms all have ProMethium boards to enhance interaction and engagement of instruction. Our teachers have engaged in high-quality professional development, utilizing trauma-informed and culturally relevant practices. As we plan out the events and opportunities for this year, we continue to frame our thinking around what's possible. When we think about what's possible, we continue to open future opportunities for our learners and families. Through the lens of what's possible, we've transformed the delivery of our community engagement. We provide access to physical learning resources for our learners through prepared drive-up material distributions. We held our first-ever school-wide virtual back-to-school night and continue to offer parent-virtual educational webinar events. As we set the stage towards future learning, we lean on the foundation of our why. We continue to frame our thinking around what's possible and focus our mindset aligned to our values. In sharing our school's priorities tonight, you will hear from one of our amazing 4th grade teachers, Mrs. Meyer Houston, as she shares about how we incorporate our three social-emotional learning signature practices. We will hear from two of our mighty Oak learners, Rosalie Baccus and Jamison Rodriguez, in sharing about our school's best practices. We will share in our work in multi-tiered systems of support, otherwise known as MTSS, and our wonderful community liaison, Mrs. Bernal. And our outstanding PTO president and parent, Mrs. Harris, will share about our opportunities for parent and community engagement. To promote connectedness and further inspire our actionable work in line with our district's mission, at the beginning of the school year, our teaching team took time to reflect on their individual why. Picture here on the slide is a snapshot of some of the reflective work, which serves as continued motivation for our team to further inspire our community of learners that we serve so proudly here at Canyon Oaks. When we think what's possible and we guide that with our district's values of gratitude, compassion, patience, reflection, and flexibility, we develop the foundation and mindset we need to make space for innovation in our work. Our innovative work begins in promoting a strength-based inclusive school culture for our learners' success. And with that, I turn it over to our teacher, Mrs. Meyer Houston.
Ms. Meyer Houston, we need you to unmute your mic.
Mute, yeah.
Start over.
Okay, here we go. Take two. So, thank you, Principal Vazquez, for nurturing this SEL initiative of inclusivity on our first day of professional development here at Canyon Oaks. So as a teacher, I'll be sharing what the practices that we use to ensure our students are maximizing their learning. So we teachers begin each learning cohort with these three signature practices that are culturally responsive, trauma-informed, intentional, intersectional, and inclusive. First, there's always a welcoming ritual that includes community building and a check-in. For example, because we are reminding students of our school-wide best practices to be safe, respectful, responsible, and kind, sample questions or prompts would be, "So, think about, then tell how you are, good friend." It could also be, "How are you feeling about learning today?" Then, we use engaging strategies that recognize productivity and creativity are possible when social and emotional needs are met and the neocortex is engaged. These strategies assist students in academic sense-making. For example, we provide one, personal think time to process a concept. We also do a think-pair-share time in the Zoom breakout rooms to generate ideas as well as to deepen understanding. Older students use slide decks to type their shared responses. Those slides are evidence of student engagement and accountability. When we see students need help getting started, then we know exactly which breakout room to join. Another strategy is to reset the brain. We have students stand, stretch, wiggle, and take deep breaths. Lastly, we end our synchronous time together with an optimistic closure so students can reflect on their learning and look forward to their asynchronous learning time. In my class, for example, students have said, "Thank you, Levi, for being a great learning partner. Your explanation helps me better understand ratio tables." Some have said, "Have a great day, everyone. Hope to see you later in PE class or music class." So now, I will have two of my 4th graders explain how students in each Canyon Oaks class has helped to create a culture of highly engaged learning. So go for it, Rosalie.
Hello, my name is Rosalie Jasleen Baccus. Ever since kindergarten, I've been taught at Canyon Oaks how to be my best, by being safe, respectful, responsible, and kind in the classroom. For example, in the hallways, playground, and bathroom, you get a result of no one getting hurt, physically or emotionally. So now that we are staying home while learning, we had to create best behavior roles similar to the ones in class. But this time, it is for online distance learning, where everyone feels included. On this matrix about being our best, the one I contributed to help us through and then out of the learning pit was about being respectful in the breakout rooms. We need to be able to take turns and give everyone a chance to speak. We would use this to hear everyone's ideas about solving problems. Now, my classmate Jamison will talk more about the best Zoom rules.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jamison Rodriguez. We students created rules and then agreed to be our best while in online distance learning. For example, rules about what we should sound like and look like while we are in our Zoom sessions. You can see in the slide that it shows how we can be safe, respectful, and responsible when we are entering our Zoom sessions, when we are learning and engaged with the whole class, and when we are actively participating in the breakout rooms. The rule I contributed guides us to be safe as learning partners. We should keep our volumes at comfortable levels. We need to do this so everyone can hear what's being said and so we can all learn well. Also, if you can't hear the teacher, then you won't be able to write down what the teacher is saying. So it's really important to speak up during our Zoom sessions and to actively listen well. Thank you for letting us represent Canyon Oaks Elementary School at its best.
All right, thank you, Rosalie Jamison and Mrs. Meyer Houston. As we work to educate the whole child, we utilize the framework of MTSS. We do that to increase access and engagement while eliminating any barriers to deeper thinking and learning. Each week, our MTSS team meets to examine data. We progress monitor interventions and plan for next steps in response to students' needs. We utilize academic and social-emotional universal screeners. Our STAR assessments are new this year, as well as our Strengths and Difficulties questionnaire, called the SDQ, which both monitors academic and then we have a social-emotional screener. We combine that along with shared teacher data and student work, and we use those data points to guide our decisions into best practices and supports. We promote connections before content by getting to know the strengths and interests of our learners. Building trusting relationships is key in promoting the academic, social, emotional, and behavior success of all. Our parents as partners are crucial to our work. And at this time, we'll hear from our community liaison, Mrs. Bernal.
Thank you, Ms. Vazquez. My name is Jeanette Salinas Bernal. I am the community parent liaison at Canyon Oaks Elementary School. During this pandemic, distance learnings and in-person, we want to provide proactively learning support to our students and families. I have supported parents in creating Aries Portal, completing student data confirmation, helping with the free and reduced online application. I have worked with parents to understand the navigation and clever and the importance of their learning apps, such as Imagine Learning, Dreambox. With students returning in person, I was able to help parents create Parent Square accounts and help them understand the resource of communication through these apps and on the Parent Square app, completing the health screening agreement. And then, as the students came back, the importance of completing the daily health survey. And also, at Canyon Oaks, we, I am part of the ELAC webinar meetings. This is important because I get to help and inform the parents of our English learning families. Because we want to meet the students' and parents' needs, we have established a weekly concierge team meeting, the principal and support staff meet to discuss the needs of families and the ways we could keep supporting Canyon Oak students. Keeping parents informed will help students' success as parents being the first support at home with the school collaborating. At Canyon Oaks, we are about communities, learning, and the best support to behavioral, social, emotional, and academic needs for all of our learners.
And with that, we'll hear from our PTO president, Mrs. Harris.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Harris, and I am a parent of a second grade teacher, a second grader at Canyon Oaks Elementary, as well as the current PTO president. I've had the privilege of serving on the PTO board since 2013, and I've witnessed the challenges and also the many benefits of having a solid partnership between PTO and the COES teachers and staff. Together, we've been able to adapt to the recent changes in our society due to the COVID-19 pandemic. But prior to the pandemic, the PTO and teachers were able to establish a positive and close-knit community atmosphere at Canyon Oaks, having family-oriented events that created lasting memories for our COES families, such as our annual Fun Run, Harvest and Spring Arts Festivals, just to name a few. This year, we managed to have a virtual Fit and Fund Drive event in lieu of our popular Fund Run fundraising event. With the generous support of our awesome Canyon Oaks families, we've been able to sustain continued financial support to both the students and their teachers. Now, as a parent, my recent experience with distance learning has been very challenging, as I have two other children at ACMs that I needed to tend to, as well as my youngest child. But I was very impressed to see how well NVUSD handled the situation. I saw that our Canyon Oaks teachers were ready and equipped because of their training through NVUSD. Their impact and guidance made it less stressful for us parents, especially during these unprecedented times. I'm very proud to be part of this amazing school that includes stellar people, such as our parent volunteers, PTO board, teachers, staff, and Principal Vazquez. Thank you, everyone, for supporting the students in our community.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris, and thank you, Mrs. Bernal, and thank you to all of our Canyon Oaks families for partnering with us. The theme that we launched this year off with our staff and team is "Greatness Happens at Canyon Oaks", along with the inspirational quote that "An oak tree is a daily reminder that great things often have small beginnings." Our promise at Canyon Oaks is to inspire our learners to discover their strengths and interests and talents towards their future aspirations of a college career and their life's purpose. With that, we thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal Vazquez and the team. To our students, Rosalie and Jamison, for joining us tonight is always a pleasure. I'm with Ms. Meyer Houston, like, I love this whole... So we're not there in present, we're not there live, so just a big round of applause to all of you. Thank you so much for all your hard work and for your presentation. Oh, you even do even more. I love that. Okay, so any quick comments from our board? As just a quick response to the presentations? Yes, Miss Trustee Water?
I would like to thank Rosalie and Jamison, because this has been a challenge. We've all faced this challenge, but you two have restored my faith in human nature, and I salute you. I'm really, I'm very, very proud of you. What a wonderful presentation both of you gave. And thank you for coming tonight. And gee, don't be a stranger. Tune in any old time. And maybe you can run for president in a few years. Both of you.
Thumbs up to that. Thank you, Trustee Water. Yes, Trustee Shank?
Briefly, I just want to express appreciation for the concrete examples of traditional behavior expectations sort of reimagined for the distance learning era. It's helpful to see what theory translates into in the classroom, and you gave us some very concrete examples that even a trustee can follow.
Thank you, Trustee Shank. Yeah, trustees can follow that. Our family members can follow that. I think all of us in our community can follow that. Anybody else? Robin, did you want to try? Oh, yeah, we still can't hear you. No. Okay. Thank you, Trustee Jankowicz. We could still see your excitement, though, your eyes and smile. There we go. All right. So we're ready to move on to our next one? All right, thank you all so much.
Bye, Canyon Oaks.
You mighty Oaks, amazing. All right, so next, please join me in welcoming Donaldson Way Elementary School Principal Marilyn Abelon.
Good evening, Dr. Masetti and members of our Napa Valley Unified School District Board. My name is Marilyn Abelon, Principal of Donaldson Way. And joining me later during the presentation is Chloe Ferris, our intervention specialist. I'll be sharing my screen with you now. Thank you. I'd like this opportunity to share and celebrate with you our most recent work with Goal 1, which is Student Learning Achievement and Access. Our work together has been ongoing since our launch into virtual learning in the spring of 2020. Donaldson Way teachers jumped in and signed up to be a part of the committee that launched the first series of pacing guides for distance learning. Our teachers helped to develop essential questions, focus areas, and learning targets for our elementary students. Donaldson Way teachers understand that student engagement is an integral part of the virtual learning classroom experience. Our teachers were part of the instructional team to deliver professional development to our elementary teachers across the district. They jumped in to help. I'm proud to say that our teachers still continue to serve on distance learning committees for English Language Arts and Mathematics and can always be counted on if committee work is to be launched. A high level of accountability, teamwork, and transparency exists at Donaldson Way. Each week, our teachers post their Zoom links on our school site, Zoom Tracker. This easily accessible document allows site leadership and our instructional aides to access each teacher's virtual learning classroom. As principal, I'm able to monitor student engagement and to participate in the learning that takes place in each virtual classroom. Our Title 1 Teaching Assistance also access the links to join Our Title One Teaching Assistance also accesses links to join in for small group instruction, too. Our intervention specialists can join in and join together with small breakaway groups. The Zoom Tracker also serves as a helpful tool should parents call the school office, who I have to say have probably served as our school site IT team to help coach parents should they get lost and not understand how to get back into the virtual classroom. The Zoom Tracker also shows each teacher's daily schedule and asynchronous work. Professional learning communities are the hallmark of Donaldson Way and for all of our elementary schools in Napa Valley Unified School District. We use this professional block of time to study the learning and teaching that takes place at Donaldson Way. This time is used for teachers to collaborate on student achievement, and PLCs are always student-focused, data-driven, and results-oriented. Professional collaboration is a culture at Donaldson Way. I'd like Chloe to share with you our work with differentiated instruction.
Ms. Trulie, do we need to promote Ms. Ferris? Yep. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, Principal Avalon. Can everyone hear me? Okay, thank you. Uh it's a pleasure to talk about, uh begin this discussion with differentiated instruction. It really is a fancy term to say that our Donaldson Way teachers do what's needed for our students. They take the curriculum and divide it up and make it accessible for kids. In the spring, during the our first closure, teachers held small groups beyond our minimum 20 minutes twice a day for students to meet the needs of struggling learners. Fast forward to our fall in virtual learning, our teachers joined forces with our amazing IAs who are funded by our Title, uh Title One funds and to provide extra instruction, extra support in that small group differentiated instruction. Our teachers also, during asynchronous time outside of the classroom time, give students assignments that they can digest. So differentiating instruction means that advanced learners will get more challenging projects and assignments. Students who are struggling will get just right assignments at their level. Next. Also, at Donaldson Way, we are using our data to make informed decisions to help students achieve. We were lucky enough to be able to complete our LPAC last spring in February. A hundred percent completion rate of our annual English Language Learners Assessment. Our data shows that we had a large group of fourth and fifth graders that scored in a level one or two on the LPAC of needed a level four to be reclassified. So that really made us jump into action. And immediately in September, I began pulling those students outside of their normal classroom time and providing extra support to the curriculum as needed in language support. I also see, as you look at the slide, you'll see some amazing support providers here. We have our community liaison. Uh she reached out to families to make sure they could get on and connect with me. Uh also, our IAs pushed in and helped in small group as well with English Language Development. They're incredible. They speak not only Spanish, but Tagalog and Portuguese to support and reach out to our families of our English Language learners. Next. And technology. In spring, of course, there's a steep learning curve. At Donaldson Way, we already had Google Classroom well underway at our school. But teachers jumped on and learned Zoom, Seesaw, and then fast forward to our fall session where they added Pair Deck, Cami. Uh thank you so much for our beautiful distance learning kits that they're able to teach hybrid, both digitally, virtually, and in person at the same time. And you'll see that in a few minutes on a little video we have prepared for you. And also, uh the technology, our all-staff is all hands on deck when helping families navigate clever. If there's login issues, programming issues, or connectivity issues as well. They're shown how to use the hotspots available to them as well. So there's challenges with the technology, but our staff has been so brave and partnered with all of our families to hit that head on, and uh it's it's really inspiring. Students thrive socially, emotionally, and academically at Donaldson Way. Next. So our teachers have always been wonderful at delivering in-time social emotional learning lessons, and that is no different in this time of critical time at virtual learning. They continue with amazing community circles, restorative practices, and using those breakout rooms in Zoom, some of our kids' favorite things for team-building activities. Our staff has also been doing our trauma-informed schools training this fall. SEL training for all of our staff, and it's come in handy already this first week in dealing with students who've experienced trauma, and they're now coming back in person in school, and we have amazing toolkit, the teachers, all of us, all hands on deck to help these kiddos and families through these difficult times and providing digital citizenship to navigate the incredible world, digital world we now have right here at our finger fingertips. Next. To help us track which families, we are a very large school in American Canyon, which families need help. We have the use of this wellness tracker that was started in the springtime and continues in the fall. And what this does, it keeps track of all the students and families who may need help and get that help to them immediately through a team approach. Uh I know, Principal Avalon, you were going to talk about that a little bit more.
Yes, thank you, Chloe. Dr. Musetti and members of our school board, when we first began distance and virtual learning, we lost that level of connectivity with our families. And at that, it's many of our children and families that we're most concerned of, especially those at risk. So this was our way of being transparent and logging students that we needed to make connections with. So you see a color coding system here. Green indicates we were able to successfully engage that family, get that student back in class and attending. In yellow, it meant that we still need to have that partnership a little bit of side by side to make sure we're doing doing those daily check-ins, even if it came to calling that family every morning and say, hey, remember, you got to log on real soon. But that's what we do at Donaldson Way. Hot pink indicates our interventions were not as successful as we hoped. And this is when we know we need to work really closely with our district-level team as well as our school social worker to find out what other needs and resources that we can provide. Like my colleague shared earlier, this is when we use our multi-tiered system of support to help these students and their families. And we refer this as the wellness tracker. Family connectivity is so important, particularly when we live in a virtual learning teaching environment. So it's very important that we hold parent informational meetings via Zoom. We conduct these in both English and in Spanish. Our teachers are using that incredible block of time given to them for office hours to make phone calls, to return emails, or to even do a quick one-on-one session with families and students. We use our informational meetings to host school site council meetings so that we can plan and work together to revise our SIPSA, our Single Plan for Student Achievement, to look at our school site budget and our allocations and our resources, and how we're best supporting our students. We use this time also to meet and engage our ELAC. And at Donaldson Way, fondly and belovedly known as our cafecito, and how we work with our English learner parents to help them help their children. Of course, our fine work with our PTA, our connectivity with the American Canyon Boys and Girls Club, as well as American Canyon Parks and Recs. Family involvement, community connections are critical to the hallmark of Donaldson Way. I'd really like to celebrate our connectivity and our partnership with the Donaldson Way PTA. There was a sense of of loss when we couldn't experience a lot of the the spring and summer fun items and activities that we do. So our PTA really wanted to support us with science and inquiry and creativity, and they took the time to purchase a STEM kit for every single TK and fifth-grade student. So happily in the mail, these children were gifted with a gift in the mail, was addressed to them, and they opened a box and they either received a a water wheel that they could put together or hydraulic lift. And you can see from all their fun faces that they were able to put them together, and they eagerly posted it and emailed their photos to their principal, which I truly loved so much. Our survey data shows that many of the Donaldson Way parents prefer to stay in virtual learning. By having this, this increased the numbers of virtual classes that we're able to create. However, we are also able to decrease the number of combination classrooms that happen at Donaldson Way. We're able to develop a staggered schedule for our in-person classes, and this way, we were able to reduce the number of student traffic at campus at the same time. I'd like to take a moment to share with you some of our snapshots of the first week. Thank you for indulging me and letting me share that short clip with all of you. From that video, you can see the launch of our first week has been absolutely incredible. And from the principal standpoint, it's so nice to engage and see all those happy faces. But what I'd like to share with all of you, Chloe has said it a few times, and at Donaldson Way, we do have an all-hands-on-deck culture. It is a philosophy that we have at Donaldson Way. None of that great work with the opening of in-person learning could have not taken place without the teachers and staff of Donaldson Way. I'm proud to report that we have 100% certificated on deck for teaching and learning at Donaldson Way. We have 100% of our classified staff to support learning and achieving at our school site. Thank you for allowing me to share this celebration with all of you. I want you to know it's an honor to serve as a principal with our Napa Valley Unified School District. It is truly a gift to work alongside the Donaldson Way community. Thank you.
Combination of clapping, woohoo's, snapping fingers all around. Thank you, Principal Avalon, and to the team for all your hard work and effort and really showing us just a bit of 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 everything that you do. So any words coming from our trustees, brief ones? Yes, Trustee Shank.
I cannot tell you, Ms. Avalon, how much Donaldson Way has changed in the last 25 years. I I believe it's for the better. I'm impressed. I I comparing it to where you were a quarter century ago, it's always changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Water.
I agree with Trustee Shank. Um I used to work nearby there 20 years ago. And this is a school that I visit because I'm, I know one of the teachers there, Ms. Ortiz. And I was happy to hear last week that 100% of the teachers were returning. And I visited Ms. Ortiz's class. Um I only visit teachers I know because I don't want to make everybody nervous, you know, when they're doing virtual learning. And I will tell you, I was impressed with the students in that class, how they were on board, they were all there, they were very attentive, you know, they were following the excellent rules for behavior. And one of them was, um I think one of the parents was having a little bit of trouble, um you know, working something. And so Ms. Ortiz and the little student, I think this is a first grader, were helping the adult. And it was just a great thing to see. You know, you should be very proud of your staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Water. Um checking Trustee Ortado?
Yes.
Yes.
I just, um, just want to congratulate Donaldson Way, and I'm going to, I'm going to steal your all-hands-on-deck culture idea for uh future endeavors. Great job. I truly appreciate all the work you're doing.
My pleasure to share that philosophy with you. I think we all have it. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. So one final round of applause. Thank you so much for everything, and you have a good end of your first week tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Job dragons. Bye-bye.
Bye, dragons. And for all those watching. All right, um. We should definitely have more board meetings like this, Dr. Musetti.
Yeah. I agree. They're the best.
They're the best. Okay, um, so moving on from our elementary to now our middle school. If you could all join me in welcoming American Canyon Middle School Principal Carlisa Bataller.
Hold on, we we have elementary.
You're right. I'm sorry. I scrolled down my with my screen, which yes, as you all know, with distance learning, everything, you can skip through a few things. So thank you. All right, you're right. We are not done with our elementary schools. One more to go. And that we have Napa Junction Elementary School, and if you can all join me in welcoming Principal Noreen Montgomery.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much to the Board of Education and to our superintendent, Dr. Musetti, for the opportunity to celebrate with you the beauty of Napa Junction Elementary School. It is an absolute honor to be here this evening with all of you. My name is Noreen Montgomery, and I am the very proud principal of Napa Junction Elementary. My name is Noreen Montgomery and I am the very proud principal of Napa Junction Elementary School. With me this evening is Brianna Topol, our intervention specialist, second grade teacher Kendra Leach, fourth grade teacher Katie Nesbit, and Sonia Ortega, our school social worker. When I was in my admin credential program, a professor and mentor shared a TED Talk with our class that changed the trajectory of my career. Titled Growing Roses in Concrete, Dr. Jeff Duncan Andrade spoke openly of his professional journey in East Oakland, an area rich in culture and dense with trauma. He went on to share the lyrics of the late Tupac Shakur and the idea of roses growing from concrete. Each rose, a celebration of its tenacity and sheer will to reach the sun. Sitting now before you from the office of Napa Junction, I come back to this TED Talk and think about the endless small roses here, growing from concrete each day. For all of us, the first few months of this school year have been a whirlwind of virtual teaching and learning, building relationships through a screen and working to prepare to reopen schools amidst a global pandemic. The first few months brought fires eliciting evacuations of staff. The Napa Junction community continues to mourn two tragic losses. The spouse of a colleague and angel baby Ella, the infant daughter of our second grade teacher, born October 2nd with a rare heart condition. The concrete this year has felt heavy, even suffocating at times. Yet here we are, a community of roses persevering through concrete. And at that, I will share my screen. Kendra?
Okay. Hi, sorry. I didn't you. Hi, my name is Kendra Leach and I'm second grade teacher at Napa Junction. And as a Napa Junction teacher for the last eight years, I am proud and humbled by the work we've embarked on at our school site. As a strong and dedicated team of educators, we have created a school-wide culture that embraces students for who they are and encourages growth and leadership from everyone. This year, we were recognized for that work by the New Tech Network as a spotlight school, emphasizing specifically the work we've done around building a strong adult culture. This work has directly affected and altered the overall culture of our school in a really positive way. Our stuff, our staff has learned to embrace the principles of a growth mindset, to be reflective and to work collaboratively to improve our practices. Each year, we remain focused on only one or two goals with professional development and collaboration time devoted to a deep dive into these topics. We remain committed to pushing ourselves to be better at our practice, to be vulnerable within our community and with each other, and to recognize areas that we need to grow. We work to be open and willing to try new strategies, to reflect on effectiveness, and most importantly, to always be willing to change our methods to strive towards improving student learning. We know that a strong culture is at the heart of any organization and the foundation on which greatness is built. We as a staff at Napa Junction are on board to work as hard as we can as leaders to ensure that this work continues. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you, Kendra. Napa Junction is absolutely rich in diversity with a student population of 117 English learners out of 420 students. According to the 2019 dashboard, close to 61% of our population is socio-economically disadvantaged. 14.3% of our student population were considered chronically absent back in 2019, a percentage we have worked on and brought up to a mere 6.9% as of month three in this 2020-2021 school year. Brianna?
Good evening. My name is Brianna Topol. And this marks my seventh year teaching reading interventions at Napa Junction. Currently, my focus is on small ELD groups that target all who scored a one or two on their most recent language assessment. I see students in grades one through five. And beyond the text and writing, my lessons highlight part two of ELD, How English Works. I also serve small groups of first and second graders in literacy development. I use Fontes and Pennell's Language Literacy Intervention Program to serve this need. And groups are developed based on like reading behaviors. All my students meet with me outside of synchronous time for 40 minutes, two or three times a week. And I have a video clip to share where you will see one of my small groups working on phonics. And then you will see how the phonics connects to the writing about our reading. All right, I'm going to share my screen, guys. With the work and we're going to work on that bossy E. We worked on it a little bit last time we met. The bossy E makes the vowel say its name, remember? So for example, if we have this word, you can write this word on your whiteboard. What does this word say?
Like.
Like.
Like. And what's happened in this word? What's that E say?
Say.
Say.
I say.
Yes, good job. I love how you are all participating. It's making the I say it's A. Let's think.
What's the saying in the board?
It says like, good. Let's, we're going to come up with some rhyming words with like. What about this word? If you change the beginning sound to an H, what's our new word?
Hi.
Hi. Again, E is telling the I to say I, hike. Excellent. I wonder, I wonder if you could think of a rhyming word with like and bike. What is it? Is it that?
Right.
Oh, yeah. You ride the bicycle. Bike? Is that what you said? Good. Nice job. Let's add bike to our list. I, we're pretending we are roxy talking. I do, what's the first sound you hear in do?
B.
B, good job.
Ooh.
I bet you can all build the word not.
Hmm?
Ah. I love it. Hunter, you got not no problem.
Hmm? Ah.
Nice, Isa. Good job, Leilani. All right. Make sure to put spaces between your words so we know when the word finishes and the nuance starts. I do not. And then you are going to write the word like. Because we just practiced it. It has that bossy E, remember? Oh, I. Don't.
Thanks, Brianna. Katie?
Hi, everyone. I'm Katie Nesbit. I teach fourth grade at Napa Junction. This is my eighth year there. So starting in 2016, Napa Junction began to put an important focus on student and teacher clarity. So since then, we've been using learning targets grounded in Common Core state standards. And they're evident in all of our classrooms. We found that utilizing these learning targets make the standard much more accessible to our students. And therefore they can speak to their learning and how successful they are feeling with the standard. Next slide.
Yes. Sorry.
Okay, so here are two third grade teachers. They're using learning targets in their practice. The first one is Mrs. Myers. She's going to be on the left and it'll be the first one we show you. She's unpacking a learning target. This is an important first step because it offers clarity around what the expectation is. And then in the other video, Ms. Fulford has already taught the learning target. And now she is encouraging her students to self-evaluate where they're at in their learning.
Okay, so represent means that you can show. And you can show it either as a drawing. And it's basically the same thing that you guys do in math all the time. As a drawing, you can represent it with numbers. Okay? And this will make more sense as we go along. Okay, so you're going to represent, you're going to be able to show by either drawing or with numbers, multiplication problems, okay? Because you need to have a really good understanding of what multiplication means before you can move on and do the more difficult, or I should say complicated problems, okay? As you get older. So I can represent and solve. I bet somebody knows what solve means. Johanna?
Figure it out.
Yeah, you can figure it out.
Okay, let me go ahead and take a look. I want you to do some self reflecting. So if you feel very confident about adding and subtracting and rounding, you're going to give yourself a four. That means I got this, Mrs. Fulford, and I can teach it to somebody else. If you can do it on your own and you can prove your answer, give yourself a three. If you can do it, but you still need a little bit of support, give yourself a two. And if you're not sure about what we're doing yet, or how to add or subtract around yet, the key word being yet, give yourself a one. And then take a look and see how we're rating. Okay, wow, I have quite a few fours. Threes. I still have a couple of twos. You know what? Your level. I'm so glad that you're being honest. It's really important for me to see who feels confident and who might need a little bit of extra support.
So cute. And then these are more examples of learning targets. Like I said, they're in all of our classrooms. On the left is kindergarten and on the right is actually from my classroom, fourth grade learning target on multiplying one-digit numbers by four-digit numbers. This is also my classroom. The picture on the left is a small group of students through, in my PM cohort, that through using a variety of checks for understanding, I realized they were not able to multiply two digits by one digit using the area model, which I was requiring of them or asking to see. So I did small group with them and by the end of the time I worked with those students, they were able to show me how to, they were able to demonstrate their learning. And now my entire class is doing just fine with the learning target of multiplying four-digit by, by one-digit numbers. And that's on the right. Okay? I have seen so many positive outcomes from using learning targets in my classroom. Teacher and student confidence, parent involvement, they know what's being taught. Goal setting and agency. I could talk about learning targets all day. So if you have any questions regarding learning targets, please don't hesitate to email me. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. All right, Sonia?
Hello, my name is Sonia Ortega and this is my first year at Napa Junction as their school social worker. Our focus has been, sorry, on building a multidisciplinary team that includes our school principal, myself, the parent liaison, a resource teacher, an intervention specialist, and the credentialed nurse, as well as our speech therapist. We meet weekly and focus on request for assistance referrals from all staff, as well as data from our strengths and difficulties questionnaire, attendance, and then work to implement interventions to support those students. We've made five home visits in the last three months of families that we were having a difficult time connecting with. Our main goal has been to build relationships with our families and our students. And it's reflected in our chronic absenteeism rate, which is now a low 6.9%. I am looking forward to meeting and serving more families within our school community. Thank you.
Thanks, Sonia.
Napa Junction successfully accommodated seven virtual-only teachers prior to the transition to Phase Two. Two teachers actually changed grade levels completely in order to support one another. Our fourth and fifth grade in-person teachers, Mrs. Ireland, who is also known as Mrs. Nesbit, sorry, Katie. Mrs. Nesbit and Mrs. Johnson are both teaching simultaneously from their classroom, hosting students in person and zooming with students virtually at the same time. It's, it is quite, quite a feat to master, let me tell you. The COVID-19 reopening team met weekly for four weeks. Problem-solving situations from student drop-off and pickup to bathroom protocols. We successfully welcomed back 108 students across nine different classrooms and not a single student arrived without a mask. We absolutely love to celebrate and recognize the work of one another. And these are only a few of the very many amazing things happening at Napa Junction. Fifth grade teacher Heather Feinberg and kindergarten teacher Anne Gardner are participating in the three-year Math Accelerate, excuse me, Accelerate Math Grant. Fifth grade teacher Audrey Johnson and the fourth grade teacher Katie Nesbit are both active members of the New Technology Network and the Center for Excellence, presenting and training at various conferences. Napa Junction is both a spotlight and demonstration school within the New Technology Network and hosts educators from all over the world who wish to experience the culture and community in person. It is a common practice for outside visitors to participate in learning walks and engage with students around their own learning. I have hosted a total of three different parent engagement sessions over the last three months. Each session takes place in English. Y luego otra vez en español. I send a weekly parent square titled Napa Junction Sunday News to all families in English and Spanish. We launched our first ever virtual back-to-school night in September with over 160 participants. Every teacher recorded their meeting and with the help of our colleague Anne Gardner, we developed a virtual classroom where all meetings are stored. So if you will see, all you have to do is click on a door and find your meeting and they are linked in our virtual classroom. The three American Canyon Elementary Schools collaborated at the start of the school year and we decided to hold our first ever joint virtual informational ELAC meeting with over 40 participants. That was really fun. The Napa Junction PTA has welcomed the highest number of members in at least three years. They continue to think globally about ways to support the Napa Junction community in both a virtual and hybrid setting. In closing, I'm going to stop Cher, if that's okay, if I can find it. All right. The students of Napa Junction are absolutely always at the forefront of our work. Students know that their teachers care about them. We address the needs of every student, whether it be virtual or in person. Our classrooms at Napa Junction are a sense of intervention. We work hard to ensure that school is that chance out of the concrete. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Montgomery and to the staff and the team for your presentation. I will now open up to our trustees for any comments.
Will I have a voice?
Yes, trustee Shank?
I'm impressed about, with the expectations for the kids, all kids. They're much higher than when I was a kid. I don't remember engaging in self-reflection of my own learning in the third or fourth grade. So I applaud the, the work you're doing and the rig you're bringing to it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Shank. Trustee Janko X, we can hear you.
Yay. Um, that was fabulous. It is very clear that the seeds permeate the concrete at Napa Junction and that your students are growing and learning. I love the self-evaluation and the self-reflection. I love the target learning, setting goals, because that applies to everything these kids will, will do for the rest of their lives. I do have to say that I was, as I was looking through the presentations prior to this evening, I was going to make a comment about one of your teachers who does such a brilliant job of, on social media of highlighting what goes on at Napa Junction, highlighting what goes on in the classroom. on social media of highlighting what goes on at Napa Junction, highlighting what goes on in the classroom, the level of engagement, the context of the learning. She's so creative and um she happened to present tonight. So I want to commend um Kendra for just a wonderful job of sharing Napa Junction with everyone because it's clearly a special place. I can't wait to come visit and I I thoroughly thoroughly enjoyed this. So thank you.
Thank you so much. You are welcome anytime. Just do water.
Um, and Principal Montgomery, another person with whom I used to work way back when, um, I I want to echo what the previous speaker said and really congratulate you on cutting the absentee rate by more than half. I mean, I think that with, you know, some some children, you know, it gets into this habit and they feel bad and they want to come back, but they have just gotten in a rut and I am so thrilled with what you've done. This is going to make a big difference to them. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Nice to see you.
All right. Uh, well, thank you all so, so very much. Um, again, if we were all in in the same room, you'd hear the applauses from everybody and the woo-hoo. So um, thank you for everything that you're doing and um keep up that great work. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Bye, Napa Junction.
Bye, Napa Junction. Okay, um. All right, let me get myself oriented again here. Oh. Sorry, where did that go? One moment. Now I'm having my own technical issues. One second. Oh, okay. Sorry about that. My Google Windows just like closed on me, so all my notes were there. Almost there. Oh, 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 where am I here? Okay. Okay, sorry about that. Thank you. As I opened up my several windows here, um. Okay, so as um I had um previously um started to queue up here a bit, um, is now our presentation from American Canyon Middle School. If you could all help me welcome um our principal Carlisa Battalier.
Good evening, Vice President Gonzalez Mars, Dr. Mercedes, school board members and the community. I am Carlisa Battaguer, interim principal for American Canyon Middle School. It is an honor to present to you this evening. I am grateful for the work you do, the altruistic passion you have for the betterment of others and for the opportunity to be a part of the work in the role I serve. In the short time I have served in the role, it there is so much to celebrate. It was hard to narrow down to just one goal. However, I digress. In response to the fruit of your tireless efforts and decisions for the strategic plan, we've narrowed our celebrating American Canyon Middle School to focus on goal one, student learning achievement and access. This district's vision of transforming lives to instill lifelong learning aligns with the ACMS vision to meet that goal. Where we strive in inspiring and empowering students today to shape a better tomorrow. We are ACMS strong. Who are we at ACMS or American Canyon Middle School? We are a diverse community of learners of many backgrounds as seen on this slide and shared about in the previous presentations. I'm excited to share how our diverse learners are doing in distance learning. I celebrate goal one, student learning, achievement and access as it encompasses all the hard work of all the strategic plan goals. I celebrate American Canyon Middle School students. They are the leaders of tomorrow and are our greatest asset in guiding us and our world to be better than ever. Diversity and distance learning. Let's see how it's going. We're going to get started by having our student Lorenzo Servente join us and we're going to have a brief interview with him so we can see how he's doing and he share and he's going to share his experiences in distance learning. Are you with us, Lorenzo?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, Lorenzo, for joining us today. Are you ready?
Yes, I'm very ready.
Okay, you've been so patient. Thank you, Lorenzo. Okay, let's get started. What was the hardest part of distance learning?
The hardest part for distance learning is that you have a lot of distractions in front of you, such as toys or maybe a TV.
And how did you overcome that challenge?
The way I overcame the challenge, the this obstacle is by putting toys and a TV in a different room. Then, once I finished my school and all my homework, I could go into that room, play with my toys, watch some TV, and then it would still be there the next day for school.
Brilliant. Well, it sounds like you've really been able to organize yourself. Way to go. Can you share the applications you've been using?
The apps I use are Quo, which is we only use for ELLA. Uh, Dreambox, which is only math. A smart music, which you can use any kind of instrument, even choir. Uh, Khan Academy, which you can learn almost anything, but there's not music on that. And then we have Kahoot and quizzes. They're both similar and they could be used for fun or as a test.
Wow, that's a lot of applications you're using in technology. How's cooking class going?
My cooking class is going very well. Mr. Tate, my teacher, is both good and fun. The way we, the way we do cooking classes is that Mr. Tate will cook in front of the camera and then after cooking class, he will post a recipe on Google Classroom for us to follow.
Thank you. And how about phase two? How's that going?
In phase two, there are cones, arrows, and six-foot markers all around the campus. The arrows would direct you to which direction you go. And if you're a sixth grader like me and you don't know which class is which, there are counselors everywhere that can tell you which class is which, such as Mr. Luna. If I don't know which class that is, they could tell me which class number it is, like F6.
Wow, thank you. You're really being able to navigate all of the different phases that we're going through this year. Thank you, Lorenzo. Thank you. Thank you for your time. And I'm excited. This is history in the making. Uh, Dr. Mercedes, board members, Lorenzo's goal in life is to be a director-producer. So we have to remind him this was his first interview. So when he's older, our future director-producer will remind him, we did it here. He started here. Thank you, Lorenzo. You take care. Have a great night and thanks for your patience. As we continue, you can see excellence grows here, grows here. I celebrate our students, teachers, staff, families and communities. They are growing so much through all the overcoming the challenges and remaining flexible. Let's hear from Noah as he shares out what he's been learning.
Hello, my name is Noel Nicholas and I'll be answering questions about distance learning. I appreciate that we are still being educated even through these rough times. A struggle I overcame is how to use Zoom and getting used to Zoom protocols because I know I'll be distance learning this year until it's safe to go back to real-life school. Teachers have made listen, distance learning easier by giving us an accurate amount of homework. So we don't stress all over all our assignments. They've supported us a lot.
I love how Noah said an accurate amount of homework. They are really growing a lot. Brilliant minds grow here at American Canyon Middle School. Here we have Yasmin and she's going to share out with us the tools that she's been learning.
Hi, my name is Yasmin. I go to American Canyon Middle School. Something that I have appreciated this year about distance learning is all the new resources that I have learned to use, like Dreambox, Clever and Zoom. A struggle that I have overcome this year, this year is the schedule. I now know how to keep up with it and which days I have each class and what time they start. That was a little tricky for me at first because it was different from at-school schedule. My teachers have helped me a lot this year with this by telling us at the end of classes which period we have next and what time they start. Little reminders like that have helped me to remember and helped me to get better at time management.
And no matter which student we ask, they all seem to be growing in different ways. Here's some leadership team students' perspectives on what they've been learning.
That's the question. How are you doing with distance learning so far? And how I would respond to that question is that I would say at first it was hard to, you know, figure out the schedule or get on Zoom to work Zoom even, to unmute yourself or to type in the chat to your teacher. But ever since doing it since August, it's been getting easier and easier to do it digitally.
Hi, my name is Alana. I'm in seventh grade and I'm here to talk about how I've grown in general with regards to distance learning in school. I've grown in so many different ways, but one of the ways I've grown in is concentration. I've grown in concentration because there are a lot more distractions since school has really helped because now when we go back to school, it will be easier for me to concentrate on what my teacher is teaching us and the classwork or homework that they assign. Thank you for watching.
Hi, so my name's Neelani and I'm an eighth-grade student at ACMS. And today I wanted to talk about some of the things I appreciate about our teachers. So I appreciate that they can make their own lesson plans and teach it to us six times a day because I'm sure it's boring and tiring for them since they're like saying the same words and showing everyone the same thing. And I really admire how they can give us a lot of information through Zoom and make it seem like we're pretty much doing the same amount of work we do in person.
Okay, I never tire of hearing from the kids and what they have to share. It's amazing how they're growing and applying the applications that they're learning from their teachers and just really going for it. The confidence that they're executing through the lessons are incredible. Let's hear from Xavier, you'll see. And this was on his own from a morning message. He just responded all by himself.
Hello, my name is Xavier and what I'm going to be talking about is Katherine Johnson. Katherine Johnson is an American mathematician who helped send astronauts to the moon by calculating the flight path of spacecraft while working for NASA. In nineteen fifty-two, she found out she could work for NASA at the All Black West Area Computing Section. I admire her so much. She is very smart and she's very nice and she knows what she's doing. And that is why I admire her so much.
These kids are really shining. They're growing in ways that we never would have expected. Nicholas shares about his content area. He's learning in math.
Welcome back to my cooking channel and today we're going to make some mac and cheese. But this ain't no ordinary mac and cheese. This is some thick and creamy mac and cheese. And this mac and cheese may be simple, but when you try it, it really tastes to taste buds off this world. So what you're gonna need is one-half of milk and one-fourth of butter. And you know, in my cooking channel, we always do some mouth-in-hair. I know all, but we do. And the ratio, I'm gonna do the ratio of milk to butter. And the ratio of the milk to butter is one-half, every one-half of milk, there's gonna be one-fourth of butter. So yeah, one-half to, one-half to one-fourth. I'm gonna end this video because I don't really have a cooking channel, so. Bye.
So again, engaging students in distance learning is a great challenge and being able to see their faces and growing in these ways are really phenomenal. We really, the teachers, the staff, the parents are doing incredible jobs.
Hi, my name is Luciana and I took Director Studies. My teachers are Ms. Ramos from American Canyon Middle School. Director Studies helped me by my teachers making sure I did my homework and I understood my classwork. My teacher also taught us about college. She said it was a lot of responsibilities, like keeping up with the homework, making sure you don't fail any classes so you get into a good college. Why do I recommend this class? I recommend Director Studies because there is a lot of good teachers and they help you get your grades up. They're, they also help you focus on the most important things in life. Plus, some teachers like Director Studies do a lot of fun things. Um, my name is Luciana Sero and I took Director Studies.
So as you can see, all levels are learning in different ways and applying what they're learning with distance learning. Teachers are connecting and really building up our students in innovative ways. Here are some examples of our art teachers' work. It's amazing to go into the class and see our art teacher teach virtually. The students are watching her on the screen and these are the products that they're coming out with. Amazing creativity and innovations that are taking place with our students. The whole student in every way are growing and learning. The students were so innovative in their creativity, they come, came up with their own pandemic art show. I'll leave that slide here for you to visit in your own leisure, but it is a whole slideshow of all the different expressions of art that our students have done. It's incredible. Here, we also see PE in action. Not only are our content areas and our electives utilizing the applications, but our students in PE were were innovative enough to come up with their own lesson plans. So they designed their own lessons and now they created it and they have a choice to be able to go and watch each other teach them certain activities and physical, you know, learning their physical exercises through their own flip grids that they're making. It's incredible all of them learning and the students. You would think, wow, how could you do PE in Zoom? I would always wonder that until I saw this. Our teachers are really motivating our students. Just a quick glimpse of what that looks like in action.
Keep it up, you guys. Squat. Fifteen seconds of squat's left.
Teachers are really using everything they can to engage our students. So impressive. Teachers and technology, it's been a tremendous transformation. When you walk in our classroom, there's a site to see how much teachers are doing to connect with their students. It's awe-inspiring to say the least. Now here's an innovative way that our teachers reached out to our students at the beginning of the year. They created a grid introducing themselves and and so that their students could see who their teachers are. I celebrate our highly effective staff of educators who are deeply committed to the learning and success of our students. I believe they are the best staff around. Even amidst a pandemic, teachers continue to strive to provide their students with what they need by first, building relationships where students feel known, cared for and seen by their teacher. And then they challenge them through standards-based, student-centered distance learning, focused on working through problems and building skills as they are assessed through the school. focused on working through problems and building skills as they are assessed through the school-wide learning outcomes to best prepare them for high school, college, and career. We celebrate our teachers and staff. Here's one example of those introduction videos, just to highlight and shine how awesome our teachers are.
Hi, I'm Mr. Trong. I teach sixth and seventh grade in physical education. I can be found in the gym next to the community center, one hundred and one, one hundred and two. Looking forward to meet.
Our teachers really reaching out and engaging with our kids. In addition to our teachers, our wellness team is amazing. I celebrate them and all they do to work to support our students. They provide multi-layered supportive services. They connecting with students in new ways, developing lunch, developing lunch groups, social groups, and counseling groups. We have counselors visiting Zooms, providing social, emotional learning ideas. They're meeting with students and coming up with innovative supports so students can thrive as best as possible in this pandemic. As we could get near the end of celebrating American Canyon Middle School, I'd like to share the parent perspective of how things are going this year in distance learning. I will start with a Spanish video and I'll walk you through how our families, as you heard before, we have over sixteen languages at our, in American Canyon. So we utilize, oh, oops, I'm sorry, let me back up, back up. How do I do that? There we go. We utilize the YouTube feature that is a part of our resources and in so doing, let me pause, this is how we've taught our families so that they can feel included and a part of our process. And be able to access the information that we have for them. And so our families have learned this process and here we go. Experiencing multilingual media through YouTube.
Buenos dias. Estoy bien agradecida con Dios por el trabajo que están haciendo los maestros con nuestros hijos. Especialmente en mi hijo, yo he observado en él que ha sido más responsable, que él está pendiente de sus tareas, él está pendiente de su hora de clase, él se ha hecho más independiente, está siendo autodidacta y él está extrañando mucho su labor en las escuelas. Porque eso le ha ayudado a él hoy en día, hoy que están con las clases online, a ser un muy, muy responsable. Él está pendiente de la hora que se levanta, se levanta temprano, se baña, come, y está pendiente de sus tareas. Y en la tarde que le va a tocar su hora con la maestra, él está entusiasmado. Él está cinco minutos antes que la maestra se conecte y está, lo veo a él que está bien entusiasmado. Dois gracias a Dios y agradezco a cada uno de los maestros porque el día viernes he recibido los reportes de sus clases. Recibo también la comunicación de los maestros que me están reportando si él estuvo o no estuvo y me está dando semanalmente su reporte académico. Yo en eso les agradezco bastante. Porque como mamá, como padre de familia, nosotros nos estamos muy felices y orgullosos de pertenecer a una institución educativa, a un distrito que lo primero que ellos ven y la importancia que hay en el corazón es la educación de nuestros hijos. Y eso como madre, como familia, como comunidad, les agradecemos mucho. Muchas gracias por todo.
And let's hear from our next family and how they're learning and growing through distance learning.
Hi, I'm Rob Hall.
Hi, I'm Jamie Hall.
And we currently have a student attending American Canyon Middle School as a seventh grader in the distance learning program. Distance learning overall has been a good experience. He interacts well with the teachers and with other students. The curriculum's been good and it felt like it's been more challenged than the previous time in the spring when it came out. Overall, he does miss the face-to-face interaction with teachers and students and we're looking forward to that at some point. But given the situation, it's been a good program. Overall, the communications are good and consistent. We get notifications pretty much daily either through email or Parent Square or both. Uh, it's been good communication with us as parents and with the students. So overall, I've been very impressed with the communication means that's been out there for this program.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And let's hear from the group family.
Hi, my name is Fanny and I have a seventh grader attending the middle school this year. The communication from the school has been really good. Aside from text messages, I do receive the emails. Um, I'm able to reach out to the school if I have any further questions. Teachers have been responsive when we need clarification. Um, the other question is how is distance learning going aside from, um, my daughter missing her friends? Um, we, um, we figured it out. We worked out our schedule. It is, um, it's, it's been smooth so far other than the technical difficulties. But other than that, it's, it's been good. We're, we are looking forward to going back to school though.
And as I near the, uh, towards the end of our presentation, I'd like to share what the community says about American Canyon Middle School as they created this little video to share with you.
I'm an ACMs student and I love ACMs because it gives me a sense of responsibility.
I am an ACMs student and I love our beautiful campus.
I'm an ACMs student and I love gym.
I'm an ACMs parent and I love the administration staff and the teachers.
I'm an ACMs student and I love how fast that the teachers are.
I'm assistant principal at ACMs and I love our community because they're so bright.
I'm an ACMs student and I like math.
I'm a special education teacher at ACMs and I love teaching students how to advocate for their learning.
I am an ACMs student and I love the academic opportunities.
I am an ACMs student and I love my teacher.
And as we have it, technology is streaming here. Let me see if I make it small so you can finish it out. And again, as I've been highlighting the students because their voice and the parents' perspective really show all the hard work that's been happening at American Canyon Middle School, I'd like to close with this poem. And this, this poem was an unsolicited writing by a student. And wherever it says teacher, I'd really like the board members to put their, their, your name in place of teachers. It's because of your governance, your policy, your thoughtful decisions that has supported American Canyon Middle School, empowering the students' voice and providing evidence of how each of you are making a difference in the lives of our students, our American Canyon Middle School students, living the vision of transforming lives and instilling lifelong learning while supporting American Canyon Middle School and its vision of inspiring and empowering students today to shape a better tomorrow. I celebrate you as we end our celebrating ACMs presentation and I thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, Principal Carlisa Battaglier. I think I said it correctly now, my apologies. But I'm starting to get a little teary there actually. That last poem is beautiful. So thank you very much and, um, thank you to the American Canyon Middle School community, teachers, the family, the students. Thank you to our also special guest Lorenzo for, for his words and to all the, all of those who really took the time to share your thoughts, um, and, and feelings and emotions and, and to our parents about, about everything. So thank you all very, very much. A round of applause, a virtual one. Thank you so much. And now open it up to our trustees for any comments.
So I would like to also thank Lorenzo for coming tonight and giving us his in-person speech. A lot of the other comments were pre-recorded, so it takes a lot of courage to come and, and talk before the board in person. So I wanted to say, good job Lorenzo, well done. And then my second comment was that I really did enjoy seeing, I think it was Nicholas, who seems to be having a lot of fun with his math.
Thank you trustee, gracias. Other comments from the board?
A big thanks to all the students, you know, um, pre-recorded or not. It is so nice to see the reflection of a school community through the voice of a student. And to, um, they understand kind of the responsibilities of distance learning. They were able to articulate, um, how they did it, kind of the whys of, of how it was working for them. And it, I think it, um, it gives us a great deal of confidence in our faculty, in administration, in our students, our parents, and how everybody really works together to not only create a good learning experience, but to navigate through some real challenges. And I think all of the student voices really reflected that this evening. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much. And I know all of us, we were really eager for those who had, um, wanted to do a site visit. But then everything happened, so we'll get around to that again and, um, and do our, get back to that track that we were, we were in in our calendars and, uh, seeing you all in person. But so just one last round of applause. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Uh, for everything that you do and have a good night. I want. Great song. Night. Okay, um, so on to now, um, to our next presentation of American Canyon High School. If you could all join in welcoming Principal Crystal Lopez.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm going to share my screen. I would like to thank Dr. Mousetti and the school board for this opportunity to celebrate American Canyon High School. My name is Crystal Lopez and I'm the principal here. And I would like to start also by thanking our assistant principals Andrew Goff, Theo Dyxell, Sherry Floor, and our athletic director Jill Stewart, our activities director Melissa Harris, and our leadership students all for helping to contribute to this presentation. They not only help to contribute to this presentation, but are vital to the culture of our school. And it's an honor to share American Canyon High School with you. Our motto at American Canyon High School is to inspire individual and collective potential by living, loving, learning, and leaving a legacy. This is our administration currently at American Canyon High School. Andrew Goff, Sherry Floor, Theo Dyxell are our administrative team. Our school-wide learning outcomes are content knowledge and critical thinking skills, written communication skills, oral communication skills, collaboration skills, and agency. Our outcomes are tied to our previous affiliation to the New York Network and these outcomes drive our assessment and grading across campus. We were fortunate enough to, um, last year, put together our full self-study for a WASC accreditation visit. That self-study is it has not yet occurred. Um, I believe our scheduled date to start was March fifteenth and we closed school on March thirteenth. So we have rescheduled that visit, but in that time last year, we have put together our school action plan with our goals aligned to the NVUSD strategic plan. And these goals will drive our operational decision-making around instruction and everything that happens on our campus for the next six years. So our first goal is to improve our CASP performance scores for all subgroups, specifically by using assessment to inform our instructional practices and intervention with specific focus on math, all targets, ELA, reading and listening as measured by the California dashboard. Goal number two is to further develop the use of our specific learning intentions, reaching opportunities and support structures for core math, ELA, social studies, and science courses with an increased focus on improving the performance of both the African-American and Hispanic subgroups. Our third action plan goal is to improve communication and access to all college and career indicators as measured on the California dashboard with a specific focus on our implementation of the PSAT for all tenth and eleventh grade students, college and career planning through the use of Navion, increased enrollment in our Level Two CTE courses, and greater access to a wider variety of college courses on campus. And our fourth action plan goal is to revisit our school-wide learning outcomes and use the assessment of essential standards through the use of our proficiency skills aligned to the Common Core State Standards, learning intentions in all ELA, math, science, and social studies subject matter courses. Our equity centered leadership and inclusive organizational culture. Our community engagement and oversight includes the alliance, our school site council, and our articulation with feeder school administration. The alliance is a initiative, is our main parent organization, a consortium of stakeholders motivated to improve American Canyon High School programs. Our members of the alliance include parents, civic leaders, community members, businesses, alumni, students, and some ACHF staff, staff members. Our community took a huge interest in helping our school get its fundraising off the ground, knowing there would be no strong parent organizations in the early years. So the alliance serves as the overarching organization for our campus's main fundraising groups, our band boosters, our choir boosters, our athletic go pack athletic boosters, and our Alpha Wolves academic boosters. Um, as you saw on the first slide, this is the ten-year anniversary of American Canyon High School. And so the alliance was pivotal in helping our school get some of these parent groups off the ground with community support and compliance and funding to get things started. Our school site council meetings are once a month and are open to the public. All agendas and minutes are posted on our website. Our school site council makes decisions around our site spending and approving our school-wide action plan and our single plan for student achievement. Teachers are encouraged to submit applications for professional development that can be funded by site council approval. Our application process includes a form with our action plan goals and teachers must include how these funds will help our school meet one of these goals. So at our site, if teachers want to attend a conference or take in any kind of professional development, they fill out this form and on this form, we sort of have the parameters around how we can spend money and how much money you are requesting. Then at the bottom of the form, we ask you how this funding approval will meet our school goals. And then once this has been submitted, it will go to the school site council. And in our school site council meetings, this is where we will work with our stakeholders and school site council to then approve the request or not. So we really are trying to be very transparent and making sure that all of our school site spending for these teacher needs really does align with our goals and that it approved by a stakeholder body of parents and students and teachers and staff so that everybody has a say in what goes on in our campus. We have monthly PLC meetings with all of our American Canyon High School principals. So we meet often to discuss our American Canyon needs and to stay in close collaboration with each other to make sure we're meeting the needs of our families and our students. Our ELAC committee as well is in collaboration with American Our ELAC committee as well is in collaboration with American Canyon Middle School. We have been running our ELAC meetings virtually with some decent success. So we're going to continue to work on that as well with Clarissa and American Canyon Middle School. Most of our school goals do align to student learning achievement and access and students experiencing responsive and engaging pedagogy and students graduating college and career ready. So for the past few years, our teachers have participated in professional development around rigorous PBL. We at our site have used our professional development days at the beginning of the year in 2018 and 2019 to bring in Michael McAlle to run some sessions with all of our teachers on campus. Project-based learning has been our signature instructional model and we have participated in this professional development to improve our strategies around developing learning intentions, student assessments, and our essential standards. We are going to continue to refine our teacher clarity with learning intentions and student self-assessments. And our PLCs have developed essential standards for all of our courses. We are very proud of our last CASP test results. American Canyon High School has improved significantly in ELA and math. So our efforts around rigorous PBL, developing essential standards, having more teacher clarity seem to be paying off and we hope that continues in the future. We didn't have our CASP test this last spring. So that kind of leaves us in the dark a little bit, but we hope to see this continuing trend in both ELA and math. And it's going to help us meet all of our action plan goals. We have had PSAT testing, AP SAT testing, our AP courses are growing. That's a very significant transition over the past few years. American Canyon High School, as you know, was a project-based learning school, a new tech network school. We operated in a humanities model with team teaching. And in the past few years of slowly transitioning out of that model into our sixth period day, we have used this as an opportunity to add a number of new AP courses to our course catalog here. We have added this year AP US History, AP World History. Last year, we added AP Government. So we are really expanding that repertoire that really was not available to our students in American Canyon as it was available to students at our other high school sites. We also like to celebrate our students. Last year, we usually have our senior scholarship and award ceremony in person. Our students were awarded more money than ever last year, which we were really excited about because we were nervous that our donations would not be as high when all of this started in the spring. But we were actually able to award almost $100,000 in scholarships to our students. And we usually do that in person, but we had our scholarship ceremony online for our students to view with our families. And we won't go, I won't show too much of it, but just to give a little taste of what our students got to see. As you can see, our students were highlighted there and they were able to watch that with their families. We also have a new counseling website to try and help meet our multi-tiered, multi-domain systems of support that we're working on with our students. And it is still in the works, but we have it here and it's specifically to counseling. And our counselors are working on improving this and adding information to this website this year. We have a night to support our incoming future Wolves where they can come and view our courses, come on campus, see the campus, and get a taste of what it's like to be here at American Canyon High School and see what they want to take in their future. We are also fairly new to Avid at American Canyon High School. So we've had a slow buildup of Avid at our school site. So we have a small Avid team at our school. And each year, we've consistently added more and more students to our Avid cohorts. And this is the first year of all four years of our Avid classes at ACHS. So we're really proud of that. Our visual and performing arts, we have 814 students still currently enrolled in visual and performing arts this year. We also have a wide variety of college and career, career tech courses. We have college and career with internship. We have pathways in culinary arts, sports medicine, and in construction. Our students, social, emotional, health, and academically, we have clear student expectations. We have developed a student handbook that previously didn't exist. And we have a tardy policy, a course add drop policy, teacher change policy. We've added bells to our school day. We've added weighted grades to student transcripts and moving towards having one valedictorian for the class of 2022. Our leadership students work to impact our entire student body culture. During our advisory period, we've tried to still implement that this year with videos and surveys. And a school climate team works usually to put together our lessons that are delivered during Wednesdays during our pack time. We are very fortunate to have a wellness team at American Canyon High School and they work really hard to reach our community. Here's an example of our October newsletter put together by our social worker and our parent liaison, Rexana Ploncarde and Bibiana Corona. They're really doing everything they can to try to help meet our families and our students where they are and give them the information that they need in this environment. So we're really, really fortunate to have those resources here on our campus. We have a really robust athletic program. The tenants of athletics for American Canyon High School are character, commitment, and competition. We have our athletic director who hosts clinics with coaches on, on these three things. And we also have a captain's coalition where she works with the captains of our sports who also develop character, commitment, and competition. Our activities, we have many events throughout the year. Here are our leadership students. Our leadership students put this together. So here are all the events that usually go on throughout a school year. And our kids put together this collage of all of our school spirit. And staying positive, these are all of the things that they posted for virtual spirit weeks last year and this year. And then if I can just share one video here, you'll have to let me know if, if we have the sound on or not because I may have to restart. Are you able to hear that?
Um, I don't hear anything. Doesn't sound like it.
Let me do that one more time. American Canyon High School, welcome back to the 2020-2021 school year. What a great and interesting year this is going to be. We would like to take a minute to introduce you to your administrative team. So our assistant principals are going to introduce themselves. We will start with Ms. Floor.
Hi, everyone. I'm Crystal Lopez. I am the principal that oversees class names. And I'm really excited that all of you are coming back virtually to start. Hopefully soon or rather than later, we'll have you here on our campus and just happy to see you guys back at it.
And Mr. Goff.
Hey fellow Wolves, Mr. Goff here. I'm located in the C building on campus. I am responsible for students A through F. So if you guys have any questions or any, you know, supports that you need, go ahead and give us a call in the C building or when you get on campus, please stop by and sit. It's great to have you here. Looking for a great year.
Thank you, Mr. Dyxel.
Hi, everyone. Welcome back. My name is Mr. Dyxel. I work with a student's last name P through Z. I am located in the E building. This is my fourth year at the site. I love traveling and family and friends. And I know this is one crazy heck of a year, but we're all in it together. So welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Dyxel. And thank you to our assistant principals. As you can see, Mr. Dyxel just had a baby. So he is currently working from home. Congratulations, Mr. Dyxel. We're very excited for you. So Wolves, we can't wait to have you back on campus. But until then, just know even though the buildings are closed, school is open. My name is Ms. Lopez. I am the principal of American Canyon High School. And we would like to welcome everybody to start a fabulous year with us.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ms. Harris and I am the Director of Activities. I'm so excited to welcome you all back to this school year. The theme for this school year is Together Apart. And to talk more to you about what Together Apart means to them, I'd like to introduce our Associated Student Body Officers.
Hi, my name is Nonnie Wilson and I am your ASB president. Together apart means unique, that we're connected in this new, unique way and we're going through this struggle together, but separately.
Hi, I'm Abel Beloyan. I'm your ASB vice president. Together apart means to motivate. This means motivating each other to succeed during these uncertain times.
Hi, I'm Lila Haas. I'm ASB secretary and together apart means staying engaged. Together apart reminds us that regardless of where we are, we are still able to connect, stay engaged, and offer support to one another, even though it's through a screen.
Hi, I'm Samara Shelton and I'm ASB treasurer. And together apart to me means school spirit. Together apart means maintaining school spirit virtually, even though we are together physically.
My name is Andreas Analem and together apart reminds us of community. Although we may not be able to be in the same classroom, a sense of spirit and community is not lost.
All right, everyone. Thank you so much. Let's have a great year. Together apart. Have a great day.
Hey Wolves, I hope you all had a safe and exciting summer. As we are starting the 2020-2021 school year, we wish for you to make this year count, even though we're together apart. This Friday, August 21st, will be our first Black and Gold Day of the new school year. Make sure to dress up in your school colors and post on social media tagging at ACHS Leadership. We are all hoping for a great year ahead of us.
Our theme this year is Together Apart. To me, our theme means that even though we are socially distanced, we are still emotionally connected and going through the same issues together. Now it is your turn to tell us what the theme means to you. You will be doing so through a pack time activity led by your pack time teacher. Also, August 20th is Wolfie's 10th birthday. We would like to celebrate with the entire student body. So to do so, we will be having a social media baking extravaganza on Instagram. Just bake a cake, cupcake, cookies, and make sure to post it on your story. Then make sure you tag us at ACHS Leadership and we will post to you on our story to show everybody else your delicious treats.
Together apart, we are Wolf Pack strong.
Oh, I just lost the end of the presentation. But let me stop screen sharing here. But thank you for this opportunity for allowing American Canyon High School to show off a little bit of our character. I know the video was a little long, but the kids are so cute. So we have to, because we don't get to see them every day. So last slide was just a picture of all of our teachers together on our last professional development day. We had our teachers wear their spirit gear last October. Who knew it would be the last picture we'd all take together for the foreseeable future? So we, we miss being together with all of our teachers and all of our students. And so thank you for this opportunity and go Wolves.
Thank you, Principal Lopez. A big applause to the team and everybody. And yes, in our board packet is the slide. So I'm, I'm looking at this beautiful last slide and everyone in there. And so we feel, we feel the same way too. Who would have thought everything that's happening this year? But thank you for that lovely video and it warmed me up to kind of, it just definitely reminds you of what classrooms and high schools and students should be doing. But here we are and we're, we're making it work. Together apart. Now opening some comments from the trustees. All right, there's just been some reoccurring themes throughout, I think, every presentation of just how proud we are of all the work and dedication from everybody and for thinking and then for showing us with your time and effort, just a little bit of what that looks like. So thank you, thank you all very much. And it's one last round of applause to our Wolf Pack over there in American Canyon High School. Have a good night and thank you all for participating.
Wolves, thank you, Principal Lopez.
Hi Wolves.
Thank you. All right. So I do appreciate the trustees are trying to keep things short as we come to the end of the night. And, and welcome our last, but not least here. We have now Valley Oak High School.
Yay.
Yay.
Save the best for last.
Absolutely. A little biased, of course, because of my history with Principal Sisneros. So welcome Valley Oak High School and Principal Maria Sisneros.
Thank you so, so much for having us tonight. And I know it's been a long day. So we are going to get started. Let me share my screen. I am excited to be here tonight, not just for me to present, but we actually have a number of folks that will be joining, that are here joining us to make sure that our message comes across and in our ability to work in a way that we work together on our campus. So good evening, Dr. Musetti, Vice President Elba, Board of Trustees. I'm Maria Sisneros, the principal of Valley Oak High School. Tonight, I have my ASB officers with us. They are newly elected. Yessenia as president, Cecilia Gonzalez-Lopez, Vice President, and, I'm sorry, Secretary Treasurer. And Chris Dell Porter is our Vice President. Along with a staff member, Stephanie Lamarcas, our counselor, Garrett Buras, our teacher, Danielle Swaffer, our social worker, and Sarah Tenlaw is going to keep us on track to make sure that we stay within those 15 minutes or a little bit longer. But again, we are excited. We are a California, we are the continuation school here in the district. We host up to 250 students on our campus, both here at the Napa campus and American Canyon. We have a unique classroom. Currently, we have 45 students that are attending in person at Napa, here in the Napa campus, and 13 students in American Canyon. The other students are virtually in the afternoon. Our students are attending four days a week in the morning. So their teachers are not doing the hybrid, hybrid teaching. They teach in person and then afternoon they do the virtual learning. So I'm very excited. Again, I'm happy to introduce Yessenia. She's going to be her first student. And then we'll just introduce the speakers as we go along the way. So Yessenia, let's go ahead and get started.
Um, hello, everybody. My name is Yessenia and I am the ASB president at Valley Oak. Valley Oak has changed my point of view on school completely. I can assure everyone here that I wouldn't be the student I am today without the help of all of the teachers here and the beautiful community that we have at our school. Um, when I look back on my past, um, I really wish that I would have had someone, a teacher, that would have brought, that would have had patience and dedication with me like the teachers here do. Valley Oak brought change to my life, not only academically, but I feel like I'm more out there now. I feel emotionally better than I used to, and I feel way more sure of myself and the choices that I make. Now that I'm less insecure and happier to be in school, I feel like I can ask more questions and do things that I never thought I could do. Um, and also, I want to go on, please. Okay. Um, our mission, Valley Oak inspires academic and personal growth and prepares students for success in life. Valley Oak High School creates and maintains a self and accommodating environment for every student to pursue and achieve personal, academic, and career goals. We provide opportunities for students to become emotionally and physically healthy. We inspire envi- environmental and social awareness. We value and, we value the individual, embrace diversity, and s- and celebrate creativity while developing personal responsibility. And this is our school motto. It's painted on our wall. Everything is connected. It's true. And these are the VOHS demographics. Um, we have 77% Hispanic and 23% white, 2% foster, um, 18% LEP, um, 42% RFEP, 36% SED, and 17%, I can't really read, is everything you said, SPED, and 64% male and 40% female. And now, um, I'll give the word to Mr. Barazza.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Barazza. Good evening, Board members, Dr. Masetti, and guests. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "Learn, baby, learn, so you can earn, baby, earn." Dr. King said these words as he preached the gospel of nonviolent protest, which ultimately led to the Civil Rights Act. I would argue that many of the social, economic, and cultural challenges that Dr. King fought for still resonate in our society today. Please vote. Under the leadership of Principal Maria Sisneros, we celebrate Valley Oak High School's Model School designation, which comes from the caring, compassionate, patient team of professional educators at Valley Oak. Together, we coalesce around the many faceted challenges that often change as quickly as the colors of a sunset over the San Francisco Bay. Generally speaking, public schools are not known for their ability to identify a problem, adapt to its needs, and chart a new course of action quickly, although Dr. Masetti seems to be proving that statement false. At Valley Oak, I feel that we have challenged ourselves to meet the ever-changing needs of our student population. Alternative schools like Valley Oak serve as a social safety valve, absorbing those students who lose their way from the traditional high school path. In 21st century education, we have taken on the whole child view. That is to say, the social, emotional, and mental state of the student are taken into the consideration in addition to the academic goals and our quest to improve educational outcomes. However, it is the individual relationships that are encouraged in each class that establish a foundation of trust that Valley Oak students respond to. Dr. Barbara Nemko, Napa County's Office of Education Superintendent, and a regular speaker at Valley Oak High School graduations, has said, "We have some of the most inspirational graduation ceremonies in the Napa Valley because of the significant personal challenges our students have overcome to walk the stage." I agree with her assessment. Good evening, and thank you for your attention. Uh, up next, Cecilia CC Gonzalez-Lopez, ASB Secretary.
Um, hello. My name is Cecilia Gonzalez. I am a super senior here at Valley Oak High School, also known as the ASB Secretary. Valley Oak has taught me a lot of value within me and the school. It was a welcoming and accepting environment. Even with this pandemic, they made sure everyone's health was their first priority. It made me feel that everything is going to be okay and that every mistake grows brain cells. Every teacher I met made me feel understood with schoolwork and with mental health. Something I will always carry is the fact that we're all connected, no matter our background or story. When I say everything is connected, it really is connected. Here, I will talk about, let me present the slide. The next, there we go, sorry. Um, making an impact with hands on learning. In these images, you could see that Valley Oak High School planted 80 native plants on the Oxford Preserve. So proud of them putting their science learning into action. Another one is our Valley Oak High School gardening. Class planted cover crops in the winter to improve our soil and sequester carbon. Another one is when we went to San Pablo Bay Wetlands, planted plants with third grade students from Marin County. Also, Park Sea the Oaks are also as well growing. He, I will now welcome our counselor, Ms. Lamarcas.
Good evening, everybody, Dr. Masetti and school board members. Um, I'm the proud counselor at Valley Oak High School. And um, I think, like a lot of people have spoken about tonight, one of the main things that I've tried to do since March, since the shift to virtual learning and uh, everything we've been going through, has been to try to stay connected with students and find a way to help them stay as connected to me as easily as possible. So what you're seeing here is a screen that is part of my virtual counseling center that I put together recently, um, the beginning of this year, and it's, it's basically interactive Google slides that students can access. They all have access to them. They are set up um, kind of by topic and theme, so students can find the resources they need quickly. And one of the screens is a way to book an appointment with me directly through my open office hours every day. So just a way to try to have a quick connection with them and get them what they need um, through a visual organization system. Um, we also are kind of excited at Valley Oak that we've created a real center, not just a virtual center, but an actual center. We're calling it the Acorn Center, where roots grow deep. And this is going to be a space where we can meet with students and families safely. We can have students come in and do uh, career and college research. Um, we can provide workshops. I can provide workshops, and so can some of our wonderful community partners that come onto to campus. And so I'm excited to put that more to use as we go into Phase Two Learning and have students, some of our students back on camp, campus in person. And then finally, we have um, many wonderful community partners, but some of them are helping me this year with a big push to get all seniors to complete their financial aid applications. Um, Napa Valley College, migrant ed, uh, and also 10,000 Degrees, as well as the work I do, is really trying to incentivize and encourage all seniors to complete and submit a FAFSA or a Dream Act to, you know, essentially open the doors to college and higher education. So a huge thank you to all those partners uh, who help us do the work that we do in terms of access to college for students. Um, and then with that, with those highlights from the counseling area, I will pass it off to my colleague Danielle Swafford, a social worker, and she will talk about MTSS at Valley Oak.
Hi, I'm Danielle Swafford, um, and this is my sixth year as Valley Oak School Social Worker. And I'm so grateful to be part of this connected community. Uh, we are so fortunate to have a knowledgeable, compassionate, and creative MTSS team. And we work really well collaboratively to identify school-wide student and family needs, and we're definitely better together. Um, I really appreciate um, my partnership with um, Stephanie Lamarcas and all the amazing sh- work she does as our counselor. Um, our MTSS team, as you can see, is comprised of um, a multidisciplinary team, and on this slide, it shows um, what data we use. Um, and then we also have ways for students to self-refer, uh, students and families and staff to refer to us um, when there's a need. And we do targeted outreach, and then we have these interventions and support. So you can go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, so, we're able to provide individual group and school-wide interventions through our wellness program, which is the collaboration of internal and external site-based resources. Um, we are incredibly grateful for our strong community partnerships and all they do for our students and families. Um, this is a little bit of our virtual wellness center and Google Classroom, so all students can access this, and it's been really great because some of our community providers have done videos, so they can see who they might be meeting with, um, and then there's also links to get more information about the resources out there. Um, so some of our partners um, are in the audience tonight, and uh, we'd like to acknowledge them and thank them for their commitment to our school and our community. So if you're still there and you hung in, then uh, thank you very much, and we just really appreciate all you do. And our wellness program uh, supports academic and social, emotional growth, college and career readiness, and uh, life skills. At Valley Oak, um, we value students' voices. So I'm excited to introduce to you, to you, one of our amazing student leaders, um, Christian Del Porto.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Swafford. Um, hello, everybody. My name is Christian Del Porto. I'm a senior and the current ASB Vice President. Um, today, I want to share with you about my school experience, um, especially with our school culture. At Valley Oak, everyone is family. Everyone is welcomed, allowed to be our own unique self, and everyone checks in with each other, no matter what time of the day, whether it would be just to say hola or help with other schoolwork. Students are uh, free to be themselves with no judgment. The best part is the ability to graduate as soon as you finish with your credit, credits, and you are always welcome to come back and visit or ask for support. Valley Oak High School's graduates are not only prepared to go to work, but also prepared to enroll in college or trade schools. My goal, and that of my classmates, is after graduation, enroll in the community college and work part-time, with the ultimate goal of getting a degree. My personal goal is to major in Criminal Justice Administration, attend the Police Academy, and become a police officer. And now, welcome the best principal ever, Mrs. Narros. And remember, once an acorn, always an acorn. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris, for that introduction, and thank you to all the speakers, especially the students this evening. Um, as some of the board members have indicated too, there's nothing better than to have our students present, um, because they, they live, they live and breathe um, the school every single day. So thank you to, to everyone. Um, we, as, as we um, go through the process and look at our strategic plan for our district and our goals that are set forth by you as our school, a school board, and directed by Dr. Masetti, I, it's really important to continue to um, strengthen their relationships and to have some fun along the way. So this is our Valley Oak Acore Bunch in, in the virtual environment to where we just um, continue to meet through Zoom in our meetings, and so we, we enjoy having a little, a little fun, knowing that we also have a lot of heavy lifting to do, heavy work to do as we prepare our students um, beyond our classroom walls in our, in our high school. Part of that is our teachers that are lifelong learners, um, always stretching themselves, always out looking for ways to uh, ensure that they're at the top of their game, uh, always participating in whatever workshops are available um, in the community. And this is really highlighted by the fact that over the last five years, we have, we have the two Napa County Teachers of the Year. And last year, our school psychologist was selected as an MBU Azzi Psychology Psychologist of the Year, so that's not too bad for a small staff. Um, and this year, we have actually taken on uh, the Social Emotional Learning Platform of Character Strong, which will be part of our advisory program, and this is the teachers attending that training. It'll be part of our MTSS um, program. We, uh, goal number three around robust communication. We do our best to communicate with our families as often as we can through the different platforms of social media, website. Uh, Parent Square is the most popular one, I'll be honest, um, and so we uh, want to make sure that we have our, not just our parents, but also the community engaged um, at some level. Last year, we went through a huge rebranding, uh, which has helped us really uh, be out there as, as Valley Oak and um, and really share our story within the community and organizations that continue to support um, our goals in, in, in our programs here on campus. One, and one of our um, keystone programs this year is that we are finally, we were finally eligible for the Community Eligibility Provision, which basically means that our students are able to receive free meals uh, for both breakfast and lunch. And so, I've been working on, on, on this initiative for about 15 years, and this year, we finally were able to be part of this process. In addition, as you know, we can't do or work if we don't have parent support, and so some of our parents, uh, were not able to put this in, in um, video, but it, they put it for us in writing. Um, and they just want to, again, this is very common of how much our, our families appreciate and um, and support and see their students blossom here at the high school. Before, they didn't think that they would graduate, but then all of a sudden, as you can see, I'm not going to read the whole thing, is our students on get, receive awards after each grading period. And oftentimes, this is the first time um, our group of students have been recognized at a school-wide um, level, and so we are happy to get uh, feedback from our parents about how exciting um, it is to see their kids, and just be very um, excited and um, and, and happy. Another part is, again, and not just celebrating our staff, but how we engage um, the community. As you can see, last year, we had to do a lot of work uh, to engage our seniors and to make sure that we were celebrating them, so we set out the team uh, to visit their homes and deliver their caps and gowns and their swag bags, and um, it was great um, that I got to run into one of our board members um, in American Canyon, and I should have put a picture in here, but I couldn't find it. Um, but we had so much fun out in the community to make sure that this team right here got out there and celebrated um, our kiddos. Again, this is our Napa County Teacher of the Year, both um, Julie and Joanne, along with Dr. um, uh, Dr. Gomez, our, our school psychologist. One of the keystones to our school is we always try to bring real world experiences to our students. So this is Redwood Credit Union. I'm doing the buy our reality. And uh, one of my most favorite things, and when, when our students went up to one of the representatives and say, "Can I give up my kids so I can keep the boat?", um, they very quickly uh, realized, "No, you cannot do that. You have to um, keep both and try to balance your budget." So we love that um, uh, our president, uh, our board president, Isela, visited us on that day. Again, our partnerships are critical to the work that we do at Valley Oak High School. Last year, like American Canyon, we were a little concerned about our scholarship program, and we were able to award almost $30,000 in scholarships to the class of 2020. Um, and this are our partners in the community. Um, we, uh, they provide not just monetary support, um, but also provide fundraising opportunities and academic and social, emotional support, and so we're very happy to continue that relationship with them and um, I, for year in and year out um, on our campus. Goal number five around Equity Center Leadership. We are so proud of our ethnic studies with an equity focus, which is equity-focused instructions with, with our, um, within our English department, but really across all departments, including um, our science and our focus on, and, and, in the environment, because, you know, what we do, um, it really matters. Uh, it, it makes a difference. So we always want to make sure that our students, um, are, are, their voice is important, um, their, their, their views matter, and we want to make sure that they really start to connect and um, learn about who they are as, as individuals in our classroom. So when they go on and move on into the world, um, they come with that awareness and understanding of who we are as a collective group. So we're very proud of our ethnic studies program here on campus. Goal number six is really about just instilling in our, you know, in our families and our students. Um, yes, while they are, you know, there's governance and policy. Um, this is how we work together as a community to ensure that we provide a safe learning environment for all and that our academics, um, from our academics to our social, emotional uh, programs are one that honors the individual, individual student. are one that honors the individual student and that, again, promotes our students, not just, like I said, to achieve academically, but then to be ready for the next steps and whatever they choose to do. You know, our why every day is to be present, supportive and meet each student where they are and celebrate them. We engage with the community, again, to bring those world experiences. And at the end, it is very critical, the Valley Oak, keep its doors open, both to our current students and our graduates, and we will always do that. I just want to say in closing that I am honored to serve as a principal of this extraordinary school with so many promised youth that are bursting to discover the best version of themselves. So Valley Oak High School is home of the Acorns, where we value respect, compassion, responsibility and safety. And our key motto is where everything's connected. So again, thank you to the school board, Dr. Masetti and Cabinet, for hosting us and honoring us tonight and letting us share our story. Thank you.
Thank you.
You so much, Principal Sisnados, and to the students for coming to our board meeting and presenting. So a big round of applause to all of you. Lots of applauses today and really miss you all, seeing you in person and visiting the campuses as well. So I'm going to open it up to the trustees to see anybody would like to share something. Trustee Water?
Well, Mrs. Sisnarrows, I've told you this, but I want the whole board to hear it. We are honored that you are the principal at Valley Oak High School. You know, you went over, you left Napa High, where you were a wonderful assistant principal. And you know, you took on Valley Oak and made it your mission. And it's a great school. It's got a great feeling. And I just wrote down some, you know, comments. The word "family" kept coming up. Everything is connected. It's all about relationships, you know. Thank you and also to the students for helping, you know, create this school where people feel, you know, welcomed and loved and, you know, can move on, can do great things, you know, or getting the equipment they need. And I really love the fact that, you know, your students feel like they can come back and visit after graduation. I think that's very, very important. People need to feel that they have some roots. So thank you very much. And I'm not surprised you're a model continuation school. It's overdue.
Thank you, Cindy. Oh, yeah, I was a student of Mrs. Narrows and I still feel like I visit her office. Trustee Gracia, did I see your hand go up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank the three students who came tonight to be part of the presentation, Yessenia and Cecilia and Christian. It's really valuable for us to hear directly from students. So thank you for being part of the presentation tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia, for mentioning that. I think it is so great to hear you guys and see you, at least in a two-dimensional way.
Elba?
Jankowicz, go ahead.
Echoing both Trustee Water and Gracia's comments, thank you to the students. It is always wonderful to hear your voice. There's such clear support amongst the staff that is clearly a support system that benefits the students. And Cindy's right, we heard community camaraderie, purpose, family, and all of those things working together, not only, you know, the teachers and the students, but you can see how they all intertwine and interact. And it creates a very powerful community. It's just very well done.
Trustee Jankowicz, Trustee Hurtado?
Mrs. Narrows, I think you know that I married a juvenile probation officer. And for a while, Nancy was the supervising juvenile probation officer. And after I became a board member, one of her most frequent admonishments was that Valley Oak should have not just a principal, but a good principal and probably the best principal in the district. And the student should have among the best teachers in the district. And I could tell her that we had done that. I've always been impressed by your ability to surpass prior year's accomplishments. And I look forward to watching you and your school and your students grow even more as a private citizen. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Trustee Hurtado, Trustee Shank?
The brand of Valley Oak has never been stronger. So I think a new logo is a great addition. I think it's huge to your long-term success that your teachers continue their own learning through the help of Napa Learns and Turo. I didn't hear you mention the robotics team. So I'm wondering if that's a casualty of our current situation with COVID. And I did enjoy running into you all during grad week last year. It was a bit of a surprise as I'm out walking the dog to have come across you guys, but it was fun.
It was great for us too, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you again, Principals Sisnados. Once again, round of applause, snap, woohoo's, everything, all the above. So much love to you all and thank you again for everything that you do.
Bye, Acorns.
Bye, Acorns.
Thank you so much. Good night.
Bye, thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.
All right. All right, trustees, we have concluded our section of presentations. We had really just strong, energetic, even if it's a two-dimensional presentational here, but you could feel the love and the energy and the passion and the work. So now we've reached the point of concluding that section of our meeting and now going into our final comments from board members. Again, we do still have an audience and we want to make sure that everyone goes home early. Would someone would like to start? I know we've shared a lot in between and Trustee Shank, go ahead.
So these presentations are a lot more fun than the single plan for student achievement, which I know we have to do. So I think these add some color, some reality to what's happening in our schools. I can certainly commend these presentations to our new incoming trustees as a way to get to know our schools. As you can see, their personalities reflected in their presentations. I appreciate that the schools all talked about their student and community demographics. Again, I think it will help new trustees get familiar with the range of our community and not just the slice of the community they're most familiar with. I think we've all discovered some common themes. Most of the presentations touched on demographics and learning gaps. Many of our schools were providing coaching support to parents and teachers as we navigate COVID distance learning. You know, I've reflected on our own meetings and the meetings the schools have with their parent groups, community groups. I hope we don't completely revert to in-person meetings if virtual meetings have proven more successful in bringing people in in their busy lives. It's great to see the work at each school in keeping track of who's not showing up, who's struggling, what families need help. It seems to be systematic at each school so that nobody falls through the gaps. I was pleased with Canyon Oaks reflecting the value, the district value of all means all. That's always been important to me. And they specifically called out the concierge role to support parents and teachers and needing to transition to the distance learning environment. Donaldson Way's slides demonstrated active participation in district professional development using technology. And it was all quite well organized. I appreciated the knowing where our schools stood on last spring's LPAC. You've clearly thought about how to interact with parents. Again, COVID has made all of us, from the district to the individual school sites, sort of rethink things from first principles, whether it's teaching, communicating, and sort of knocking us off our historical habits, I think, has been refreshing in the way people have both stepped up, stepped out and made sure everybody was taken care of. So it's really encouraging. Yeah, I appreciated some of the videos, especially at the middle school and how they were pulling off distance learning for electives and PE. It's refreshing to hear directly from parents, especially parents I recognize. You know, it's clear our teachers have worked very hard in re-envisioning their craft. And it's been hard, demanding and draining work, I have no doubt. But it also seems at the same time to be invigorating. You know, when you're doing good work, it's a little less hard. So again, it fills me with confidence that we will get through this. The schools in American Canyon in particular have provided a natural environment for the exploration of K-12 alignment. I can hope that the American Canyon schools can take the lead in the K-12 math articulation because they really do have a microcosm where they can work on that together. And I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
You, Trustee Shank. David, Trustee Gracia, please.
Yes, so I had a couple of brief comments. I love that this is an opportunity to celebrate our schools, giving us a chance to get to know the character of some of them, along with the character of some of the students that attend their institutions. It's a nice change of pace from budget reviews and change orders. It's not necessarily something that we get at our regular board meetings. So I certainly appreciate the opportunity to, you know, put a human element behind some of the decisions that we end up making here. So I felt like this was really good.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. Trustee Water, was that?
Well, I would like to second what Trustees Gracia and Shank said. And, you know, for me, I like to be out and about and I haven't been for some months. So this was an opportunity to see what our schools are doing. And it's no substitute for in-person. But I was thinking of something that Trustee Shank said. You know, we've had great attendance with our virtual meetings, our board meetings. And it isn't just because everybody's upset with us, you know. We've had some, you know, really a lot of people I know have just tuned in, you know, because it's so easy. So I'm glad a lot of extra people tuned in tonight to see the great work that's being done in the schools. I like, it was fun. And what I really liked was, you know, the spirit that I saw. People are just, people are working hard, they're doing their best. And, you know, they're doing it with a, pretty much with a smile on their faces, you know. And that's really important for our students, for our students. And I just want to thank all the teachers and all the staff for that. It means a lot.
Thank you, Trustee Water. Anybody else? Trustee Fallow?
I was really happy that this happened while I was still on the board. I remember the first conversations that Dr. Masetti and I had about this. And I thought it was a great idea and was wondering why we hadn't done it before. It shows that, well, let's take the elementary levels. Jonathan Kozel, in his book Savage Inequalities, talked about inner-city schools and how they didn't get the support they needed in order to teach their children. And that he called elementary school teachers, particularly third-grade teachers, the ambassadors of innocence. Because in all of, in those segregated and underfunded schools, it was almost the most important task our teachers had, the teachers had then, was to protect and prolong the innocence of elementary school teachers, students, by giving them a safe zone. And I think we do that here. And you can see in talking to, in listening to our elementary school teachers, how they create environments that make learning not only fun but safe. And they protect our students. One of my biggest concerns when I came on the board was the fact that we were taking a look at problems as they developed in high school among our young men and just were completely ignoring what was happening in middle school, which is where the problems usually begin. And it's good to see that we have an eye now for the well-being and the mental health as well as physical health of our middle school students. In high school, what can you say? I mean, it was the second school I opened. Watching American Canyon High School develop has been a real treat for me. And I've already said what I feel about Valley Oak. So these are great. It shows that as both, as all three of my, for all of us, believe that being a school board member is more than approving policies and budgets. We really need to remember that it's about the children. It's about our children and our future. So I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hurtado. Trustee Jankowicz?
There's really nothing I can add. It was just, it was nice to see the individual identities of the school. It was nice to see that there's real commonality between the schools as well, that they're dedicated to our student population, that they really, we talk so often about the whole child and, you know, the academic rigor, but the social, emotional. And it was nice to see how each school puts that into practice, that we really do look at the whole child. It was interesting for me to see the different approaches. And then to see how each child absorbed all the information about distance learning or about their experience and how they learned to advocate for themselves in the classroom. And I was so delighted. And I was, I was so delighted by the self-evaluation and being able to verbalize where they were in the process of learning. And you saw that in each of the schools. It manifested itself in a, in a different approach. But that commonality of purpose amongst all the schools was really celebrated this evening. And I, I appreciated the opportunity to hear each school. And I look forward to getting to hear the balance of them.
I'll just end with, I, I, I think as a trustee, right? We, we were here to learn as well. And I felt like a, a student, I felt like our teachers and our principals came in and our students themselves came in to taught us and, and to teach us something tonight is that the resiliency that exists in each campus and, and that, that energy is still there, even though we can't physically see you, but that, that it's there. It's one of those things that we can't see, we can't touch, but it's the, the care and love that's there. And that was reflected and came across tonight. So thank you for, for teaching us tonight. And again, a special shout out to all of our students who took the time to record a video, be here present to teach us something about them. So really appreciating that.
Vice President Gonzalez-Mendez, can I just make one comment?
Absolutely, Dr. Masetti.
I just, for the record, I, I just want to say that I'm probably the, I'm not going to say probably. I'm going to say I am with 100% certainty, the proudest superintendent on the planet. I am so impressed by NBUSD. I, it's just been an incredible week. We've been reopening our schools and you heard a lot of that come through in the presentations led by our principals in American Canyon and Principal Sisnados of Valley Oak. And I just want to recognize that they have had to work really, really hard to reopen their campuses effective Monday. And us being a trailblazer district and opening our 28 schools K-12 has been because of their leadership at the site level. And despite that laborious effort, they also took the time to put forth these presentations and organize members of their community to come and share with you the work that's happening at their schools. And so, you know, we many times in our head debated, should we cancel this? Given that it happened to synergistically coincide with the reopening of NBUSD campuses amidst COVID-19. And I'm really, really grateful that we didn't. And I'm really, really proud of them for persisting and putting this together tonight. Because I think it's just a demonstration of the, the sheer will and the skill and the talent in our organization that will continue to guide us as we aim at becoming one of the best school districts in the state of California. And so I want to just thank them for their efforts. And then I want to thank the board as well, because so much of your effective decision, decision-making at the governance level manifests in the work that they do. And so I hope that you saw tonight that strong connection between the powerful governance work that you do when you make the right decision for kids and then the impact that it has for kids in our various school communities. So I really do want to thank the board and I'm very, and, and the community and our principals. And I'm very, very excited about this new governance practice in, in the Napa Valley Unified School District. So thank you to everyone for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. I think that's a beautiful way to end our, our evening. And thank you all in our community who participated and our trustees and, and our NBUSD, NBUSD family. So now we are ready for our last item, which is the adjournment of our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A first by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Ortalo, all those in favor? Do the board rap?
Hi.
Hi Carla, well, thank you all. I think no one's abstaining or opposing that motion. Have a good night and muchas gracias, thank you all.
Yes.
Thank you, Elba.